The November seventeenth meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. Prior to our pledge of allegiance, we will have the flag presented by a Cub Scout troop. And I would like to at this point call the leader. Is there a leader who's going to start off? Do you want to come up to the podium, please?
Ready?
Yep.
They need a little assistance, so excuse me.
Oh, okay.
Hand salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready to? We ready to retire the colors?
Retire the colors. These were Cub Scouts from Cub Scout Troop 348, and that was Scout Master Dave Meyer. And we also had some older Boy Scouts from Troop 695, so thank you very much for coming out tonight. And if you want to sit in at any of the meeting, feel free to stay as long as you wish. You can come and go as you desire. Thank you. Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we have a period of time called open podium. During that period of time, residents of the city can address the city council on issues related to city government. The portion of the meeting that is reserved for open podium is from approximately 6:35 to 7:55. And if you wish to speak to the council at that period of time, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, the subject matter you wish to discuss, and your phone number. If there's time after scheduled speakers, we will allow people to spontaneously get up and address the council without making a reservation. But you should have generally about five minutes on open podium maximum. These portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised, and again, if you have any questions, contact the city manager's office. We'll begin with the HRA meeting. I will now call the HRA meeting to order. Roll call. Councilmember Aho.
Here.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Chair Tara Lukens. Aye. First item is to approve the minutes from the HRA meeting that was held September 1st, 2015. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. The motion passes. The next item is to approve the First Amendment to the Subordination Agreement for Columbine Townhomes. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the HRA. I'll note first that we're going to have a HRA meeting also on December 1st, so I think it might be the first time in a while we've had consecutive HRA meetings. But this item was an item that we wanted to have on for a special meeting tonight prior to the meeting on December 1st. It is a, as you mentioned, Mayor, approving a First Amendment to a Subordination Agreement. So this property, Columbine Townhomes, is part of Tiff District Number 12, and in 1996, the HRA entered into an agreement with Columbine for the construction of this project. The agreement was then amended in 2012, and as part of the original agreement, there was a promissory note in a mortgage with certain obligations, and in 2012, the council executed a new agreement or an amendment to the agreement as it related to new lending, new financing. And that's happened again. In this case, there is another loan related to this property, so the HRA needs to approve an amendment to the Subordination Agreement. So it, you know, it actually is a consent item, but since it's the only other item on HRA, I thought I would provide some explanation for that.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Getchell? Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, could I make one comment? And this is, I had meant to put in this motion and had discussed with Mr. Getchell that the HRA also approves such other subordination amendments related to this loan that may arise in the future upon the approval of the officers, so the chair and the executive director, rather than having to bring it back.
Okay.
So if that could be part of the motion.
In the motion.
All right.
So I'd move to approve the First Amendment to the Subordination Agreement for Columbine Townhomes with the provisions that our city attorney, Mr. Rossow, made.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. The motion passes. Is there a motion for adjournment of the HRA? So move to a chair.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion is approved. We'll start our council meeting then with the first item, which is an aquatics project naming rights agreement. Mr. Lothammer.
Your Honor, councilmembers, this is from Mark and Patricia Davis that I know many of you know. Mr. Davis has been a longtime supporter of Fox Jets as well as a board member and president, and together, Mr. and Mrs. Davis are making a contribution towards the project. And naming rights that go with it are for the dryland training room, also the multipurpose room and a starting block that go with the $25,000 donation that they're making. And this also goes towards the amount that's been pledged by Team Fox Jets to raise towards the project. So in addition to Mr. Davis's time with the Fox Jets, he also spent quite a bit of time with us as we were working to design and develop the pool project, and really was supportive and gave us a lot of good insights on how swim teams would best use the facility, and so we were able to incorporate that in. So we really appreciate all his time as well as this financial contribution.
Yes, thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt this resolution accepting the donation from Mark and Patricia Davis and authorize entering into naming rights agreement relating to the aquatics expansion project.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. The next item is a Senior Community Services Key Community Partners Award, and I have this award right here. It's a beautiful and very heavy little statue. And Mr. Lothammer, you're going to describe the award and what we did to earn it.
Yeah, so the Senior Community Services were honored to be selected by them as a key community partner, and it really cuts across all of our departments within the city that partner with them in many different ways to help and support seniors, whether it's helping them find medical or financial assistance. They use the senior center from time to time to base out of in order to meet with some of the seniors in our community. Also, our Housing and Community Services is a group that matches up some of their services with the seniors depending on their needs, so means a lot. Police and Fire as well have been involved with their programs, and they're a really good partner for us, and we're glad to have them as a presence within the city, but we're glad to accept the award from them as well.
Could you describe what Senior Community Services, you talked a little about what they do, but what area do they cover? Do they hold county?
Yeah, they do. Their footprint is basically Hennepin County. They are a nonprofit, so even though they cover the county, they're not part of Hennepin County Services. And it really runs the gamut of helping seniors, whether it's with housing issues, legal issues, extended care, some financials. They have a lot of good counseling and good resources that they're able to match the seniors' needs.
Okay, great, thank you. It's a wonderful award for the city to get, and I think it was helpful that we had a task force of community members and council members that started looking into what senior issues that our community would face. This was like 20 years ago, so it's obviously paid off, and we've got programs that really help the seniors within our community, so thank you. And we don't need a motion on that. The next item is another donation for Spooky Saturday.
Yes, this covers two donations, two separate donations. One is $500 from Once Upon a Child and $150 from Fratalone's Ace Hardware to go towards the community center Spooky Saturday event, which occurred a couple of weeks ago and well-attended. If you were at the community center on that day, it's costumes and people everywhere. So we really appreciate the help from them as community partners to make this an even better event and to provide more things that kids could do there.
Thank you. It's really amazing, the community businesses that have volunteered funds to make all of these events possible within our city, and Spooky Saturday is just one of them. Is there a motion?
Sure. I move to adopt the resolution accepting the donations in the amount of $300 from Once Upon a Child and $150 from Fratalone's Ace Hardware to go towards the Spooky Saturday event at the Eden Prairie Community Center.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business? Anything to change, delete, add?
So moved.
Oh, wait, I think we do have one.
Mayor, I do have a couple, and I could have done this at the consent. It's related to consent, so two changes. One is, you see on your table in Goldenrod, there's some additional contingencies on the development agreement for Eden Prairie Retail, so that's been added since the packet was there, so that item is still there, it just has some additional material. But then we'd like to remove from the consent agenda and bring back at a later meeting D, which is the second reading of the TOD ordinance. We have some discussions that we'd still like to have with some of the affected and neighboring property owners. You may remember that you approved first reading of this ordinance, I think it was toward the end of the summer, and there's still some follow-up that we'd like to do, so we'd like to remove D from the consent, so that would just come off, that went be acted on tonight, and would come back at a future date. And as I said, C has some additional material on the table on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion for approval of that change and the rest of the agenda?
It hasn't been seconded, so just make the, go ahead and make a new motion.
Move to approve the agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. The motion passes. First public hearing is, oh, I'm sorry, consent calendar. Is there a motion for approval of the workshop minutes? Yes, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held on Tuesday, October 20th?
Prove approval.
Second.
Any items to change? Any mistakes, anything? Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held that same date?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Abstain.
The motion passes. Thank you. Consent calendar, is there a motion for approval of the consent calendar minus item D?
So moved.
Second. Any items to pull for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. The motion passes. Public hearing, our first public hearing is the first reading of an ordinance for designation of the Doran Kemper House as a historic, pardon me, as a heritage site.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We do have a program and a history of designating local sites and properties in Eden Prairie for local historic designation, and that is something that our Historic Preservation Commission has been very active on doing, or our Heritage Preservation Commission, many historic preservation commissions in many cities work on this. So tonight, we have before us a first reading of an ordinance for designating the Doran Kemper House as a heritage site, and we have with us Tara Kalar, a member of HBC, to provide a presentation on this property in this action tonight before we open the public hearing and take action.
Thank you, Tara.
Hi, councilmembers, I'm Tara Kaler, as Rick said. I'm here to present on the Doran Kemper House for local designation as an Eden Prairie historical site. The Doran Kemper House is a house that is located at 9090 Riley Lake Road in the Riley Lake Park. It's close to the Riley Jakes Barn, and it's really close to the Eden Prairie Park. It's located on city property. It is, the Riley Jakes Farmstead is a heritage preservation site in the city of Eden Prairie, and the city of Eden Prairie owns the property and the building. There is an Eden Prairie City Ordinance that allows us to designate this property as a local heritage site. The criteria for eligibility in this case, there's distinctive characteristics of the property. The property is originally a log house, and it was sided with clapboard sightings in the Victorian era. It was popular to side log housing with clapboard sightings, so you didn't look like a country bumpkin. So the fact that the siding is on there doesn't take away from the historical significance. The reason why we designate things locally as things that are historically significant preserves the historical significance for future generations, and any alterations would need to go through the Heritage Preservation Commission and have a certificate of appropriateness. And recently, the Heritage Preservation Commission has taken a place of, yes, we'll work with you, so this is not an obstructionist movement, we really do want to preserve the historical value of this property. Heritage Site Preservation Plan would be forthcoming if this is approved as a local heritage site. There are other local heritage site designations within Eden Prairie which are notable. The Cummins Grill House was designated in 1997, most notably. The Riley Jakes Farm was also designated in 1997, the Frederick Miller Spring in 1997, the Smith Douglas Moore House, which is where the Dunn Brothers is located, among others. So we do have quite a bit of history in Eden Prairie to preserve, and this is one of the most notable spots, most notable properties. And there are a couple other local designations that are possible, but this is notable because it is in such pristine condition. It was remodeled or restored in 2006 and remains intact. It is a very good example of a 19th-century farm dwelling. It was moved from its original location to the park in 2002. It consists of two connected units. There's the one and a half-story Hune Log Core and one-story kitchen wing addition. The outside has been fully restored, so has the inside. It's in an excellent state of preservation. And in the inside, it's kind of interesting because you can see the original log construction, although you can't see that from the outside in its current state. So here we have kind of a hard-to-see picture, I guess, from the 1900s. So these types of buildings were originally constructed in the 1850s when the first settlers to Eden Prairie came and were building houses. It meets the eligibility for Eden Prairie Heritage Preservation Property based on its associative and design values, the log construction, namely. It's architecturally significant, it's very rare, and it's a well-preserved example. We presented this to the Minnesota Historical Society, and they concur in our designation as a local place of historical significance. So based on these factors, we are asking the city council today to approve the designation of the Doran Kemper House as a local heritage site, and I'll take your questions if you have any.
Thank you very much for that presentation, and the pictures are great to see, too. A lot of people in the community aren't familiar with this house, so it's nice to have those pictures up there. Are there any questions? Councilmember Wickstrom.
No, I just wanted to say that I thought the report was extremely well-done, and it gave a full history of the property and also why the property was removed from its original location and situated on this particular spot, and also the means by which we were able to do such, which is very important in a historic perspective to provide that as well. I thought it was very, very well-done. Let's see, I was going to mention, oh, the other thing I was thinking when I read through this is, it really speaks to the flexibility of the National Preservation Act that we are able to preserve locally such important sites as this, even though it's not seated on its original place, even though it has an interior that's been carved out, cut out so that you can see what the construction was. That is, part of the purpose of historic preservation is to be able to show how a thing was constructed and not just sort of a living monument that has to be exactly what it was. This is a really, really good example. I'm very proud to have this in our community, and thank you all for the work that you do on the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you.
Councilmember Aho.
It's a very nice property. I've been through it, and the last time I recall going through it, I know there was some work that was still being completed in the upstairs. I assume all that work has been completed, is that correct?
I would have to check. I don't have any information about what is completed. I'm not aware of any construction that's ongoing. I know that there were some shades that needed to be placed in the windows, but I believe that's the only thing that's outstanding at this point.
Okay. Because I know, you know, I mean, I think once it becomes a historic preservation site, it makes it much more difficult and costly to do any kind of renovations, and so I guess, I think it's all in pretty good shape from my understanding, and there really would be no outstanding work that's really required to update it or do anything. So at this time, if we were to make it a historic preservation site, we're not going to then say, oh, now we've got to do this work, and now we've got to go through all this process to get that work accomplished. Is that correct?
That's correct. And also, to your point, designating this as a local heritage site would open up some availability on some of the grants that are out there for heritage sites, so it might be easier to fund a project rather than impose a difficulty.
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Case.
I'd just make a couple comments, but I think I'll let Cherry be more specific. But Brad, local designation does not restrict in maybe ways that like, if it's National Historic Listing or something would. So this is very not restrictive. It actually is just a, it's a valuing, I guess, that we as a community are placing on it that does avail this piece of property to grants, so there's.
So we don't have to go through SHPO and all of that then if we want to do any work?
I'll let Cherry be more specific, but.
We went through the Minnesota Historical Society, but I was looking, Michael Coop, I've known him for many decades. It's not SHPO, it's the State Historic Preservation Office is SHPO.
Right.
This is a little different, because we're a certified local government, we have an opportunity to have sort of different levels of preservation, I guess you would say, which is why I think it's so wonderfully flexible that we were able to move the site, that we were able to do a few things to it that probably wouldn't have been allowed if it were on the National Register of Historic Places. This is a different designation.
Perfect, thank you.
And maybe I can shed some light on the process, too. If there were alterations in the future on this property, they would apply for a certificate of appropriateness, and that would go through the Eden Prairie Planning Department.
And then to the council.
And through the Heritage Preservation Commission, and then to the council.
That's good, so that's not too onerous of a process, yeah. That's good.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, I'd also like to, yeah, I think this is particularly appropriate, also like to thank the Doran Kemper family, who I believe has been trying to chase down some of the original furniture, or else appropriate furniture when they can't find it, but they have been working very hard to turn this into, you know, a superb, you know, rendition of what the home was, you know, especially nice when they've been actually able to track down a few of the originals. So I'm glad we're doing this.
Councilmember Case.
Yeah, I had actually hit my button on another issue besides Brad, what you'd brought up, but thank you for bringing that up as well. Just to make a couple comments, I'm not sure people in Eden Prairie realize we still have three log cabins in our borders. At a time, maybe in the 1850s, we're not sure, but we probably had 60 to 70. And again, people may wonder why were log cabins built in the first place, and it's because sawmills were not around, so we didn't have the chance to go and actually purchase sod lumber, and so they used what was available, and that was logs. So the logs formed the infrastructure of the house, as opposed to today, they use, what do we call it when we do a stick method with two-by-fours and whatever?
Balloon construction or something?
Well, that, yeah, balloon construction was typical in two-story homes, yeah. Anyway, log cabin homes, so we have three of them, two of them still in private hands, so this is really nice to have this in at least one example preserved in public hands. And I guess I want to do a call-out to Dan Herbst, who is a developer in our city, who we would not have this house today. He was the developer of the property, where Settlers Ridge is today where this house was sitting, and as part of, really, it was part of a developer's agreement, but he volunteered way above and beyond in terms of spending money to have this preserved for the people of Eden Prairie, so definitely a thank you to Dan Herbst. And just to mention, too, of the Doran Kemper's who had lived there for years, Irene and Alex, and Irene was the first in the class, first graduating class of the Eden Prairie Consolidated School, eighth grade. This is her home, and she was in a class of two in 1924 in eighth grade. So she and Fritz Meidel, I met them both, I had them both in my classroom, but anyway, this was Irene's home of her child. She was born and raised there and lived her entire life there. So it's great for that to have, and her daughter Jenny today is the, I don't know, you almost want to say caretaker, she's always there anytime the house is open. She's been great to have around as well. See if there's anything else I wanted to mention? Don't think so. So again, thank you for the, all that you've done and the HPC.
Thank you. Councilmember Wickstrom.
Yeah. I just wanted to say, and I so appreciate you calling out Dan Herbst, that is the name that is in this report that will be documented in our history, and I'm so pleased with that. The, there was one other thing, I just, after, because I kind of got the feeling that everybody would be so thrilled to be able to have this locally designated, and obviously everyone is. There was one other thing, though, that I was a little bit concerned about, and that is with the furnishings in the interior of the building, I thought there was a question about getting some kind of window protection.
Yeah, those are the window treatments I was referring to. They're working on that right now.
And they're working on that, yeah.
I think they're ordered.
Are they ordered? Excellent. I definitely endorse that and would like for that to happen.
All right, any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this issue? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the first reading of an ordinance to designate the Doran Kemper House as a heritage preservation site.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. The motion passes. Thank you very much, Tara.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The next item is the first reading of an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 12 relating to subdivision of property. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Staff is bringing forward an amendment to the Chapter 12 related to subdivision of property. We've seen one instance recently, there may have been two, there actually aren't that many, but there are a few instances in our community where someone may want to combine two parcels into one, or subdivide, you know, into at most one parcel into two parcels. And so following up on some comments on recent development projects that came through, we went back and looked at our city code to see if we can streamline that process, to make it more friendly toward the resident, and move it along a little bit more swiftly. So there are changes that were needed to the code that you can see that are in the packet, that when these subdivisions that exist that are of small size and of minor significance, that there can be a more streamlined process. So those recommendations were brought forward to the Planning Commission, which voted for oh to recommend approval of this code amendment at their October 26, 15, 2015 meeting, and then also, you know, first reading is recommended approval for this evening. The city attorney helped draft the ordinance, and staff can answer any questions you have about the language in the amended ordinance.
Okay, thank you very much, and appreciate staff's work to help make this as user-friendly as possible for our residents. Questions for staff? Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this issue? Hearing none, is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance amending Chapter 12 to amend the subdivision regulations.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Payment of claims? Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to question? Hearing none? Roll call, please. Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wixstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukens. Aye. That brings us to reports of, of manager and council members. We have no council member reports, but Mr. Getchel, you have a few items.
I do. Mayor and council, thank you. The first two are related to one type of project that we're very pleased to, to bring forward. Our first two projects related to the PACE program and that is property assessed clean energy. You may recall, I believe it was in 2010, our state legislature changed state statute to allow for local communities to assess commercial, may apply to residential, but I think it's mainly a commercial, projects, allow them to assess sustainable or green improvements that they make to their properties. So you're obviously well aware of, of the 429 statute that allows cities to assess for many different local improvements. But one area that is newer would be these kind of greener, sustainable improvements to private businesses in the community. And there's a few cities in the state that then created their, their own program. However, we partnered with the St. Paul Port Authority who partners with several other communities. In fact, I was just reading an article where at least one or two cities that had their own program were kind of folding their program and going with the St. Paul Port Authority because it's a much simpler streamlined process to have an agreement with the St. Paul Port Authority who they in fact would work with these applicants to finance these projects, to lead the application process. And then you get to that final point and here we are with the city of Eden Prairie where the city council must take action on the assessment of that property. The assessment that's then actually paid to the Port Authority and there isn't any liability on the city's part or any collection activity. So in 2013, we entered into an agreement with the St. Paul Port Authority to go, to go with this program. And I know we have that same representative from the St. Paul Port Authority that was here two years ago when we entered into this agreement. And then you'll see on the consent agenda, we did some minor changes to that agreement and we now have our first two projects. And so the first one that we're asking, you adopt a resolution and approve the special assessment on, is located at 1459 Old Martin Drive and that is the World Auto Parts property. I, I see that the owners are here tonight as well and they wanted to come and be at this meeting and answer any questions that, that you may have. This is not a public hearing, you know, as I noted before, it's an action item. But what they're doing at this property is $173,000 worth of solar work. So if you drive by that property, you can see that the solar panels are already on top of the building and as I heard earlier, are already providing a savings to the property. So that's our, our first project in Eden Prairie. And so the action on behalf of the council then would be to adopt a resolution approving the special assessment for our first PACE project in Eden Prairie.
Okay. Thank you. And Chris Ishimura?
Yes.
You're in the back and is Dennis Hosek here too?
No.
Okay. So just, well, thank you for coming tonight and congratulations on such a great project. So we just need a motion?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution approving a special assistant with-
Assessment.
Assessment with Kristi Ishimura and Dennis Hosek for a property assessed clean energy PACE project.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you and congratulations on a great project again. The next item, Mr. Getchel.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is the second PACE project, so we're happy to bring both to you at the same meeting. And this is for the One Southwest Crossing office building, large office building at 11095 Viking Drive, a prominent office property in our community. And this project is $2 million of energy retrofit, including a lot of mechanical work, a lot of lighting work, HVAC work. So you're obviously very familiar with, with that type of work because our 204015 program, Eden Prairie, we've done quite a bit of this work internally in, in our city facilities as well. So it's, it's a positive thing, I think, to support the businesses in doing that as well. So in this case, it's adopting a resolution and approving this special assessment with One Southwest Crossing property for this PACE project.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Getchel? Is there a motion?
Sure. I move to adopt the resolution approving a special assessment for OSWX Property LLC for a property assessed clean energy PACE project.
Second.
And is a proponent here?
I believe I was told that they may be present. I, I missed in remarking that they may be here. I see them nodding in the back, so they are here as well.
Are here. Where?
Raise your hand.
Okay, great. Thank you. Wow, $2 million project.
Excellent.
A beautiful building and now it's even more energy efficient. Congratulations. We had a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Item number three for Mr. Getchel is backyard chickens update.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Yes, the last item I have is backyard chicken update. The council has been approached, city staff and council have been approached on and off over the last few years with a request for Eden Prairie to consider allowing backyard chickens in our community. There are several neighboring communities that more recently, I'd say in the last two to three years, have updated their city codes to allow for the keeping of backyard chickens. And that's not something that Eden Prairie has done to this point. And then more recently, there was a petition presented to the city council, but I believe it was earlier this year. And we've had quite a few open podium discussions and some council workshop discussions and maybe even some regular meeting discussions related to the backyard chicken proposal, which did lead to some outreach that the city did on, on City Connect. We had the topic on our citizen engagement online website, City Connect, related to the desire to have chickens. And if, and A, should we allow chickens and B, under what scenario or conditions? And I think there's been quite a bit of discussion at the staff level, council level, related to following what many other communities may do and that's limiting the number, not allowing roosters, having certain conditions on coops and setbacks. And that material, all the material, all the feedback that we received in early August is in the packet. It was presented to you in the workshop, but all that material is here verbatim, is well in the packet. And also there is material that has been provided to you from the proponents in the past. They've come forward and they've provided you with some research and some information that, that they've done on their own. And then finally, following your direction at the council meeting, I believe it was the October 6th council meeting, you asked city staff to look into some of those neighboring city policies, regulations and ordinances. So that's in the packet and you'll see that those neighboring cities that do have a program do have ordinances that allow the keeping of chickens. Very few actually license or regulate the use. I think they probably follow up on a complaint basis. They have those protocols in place, as I talked about, with limiting the number and following up on a complaint basis, but there aren't many that have a registration or licensing program. So some that do, there are, we were able to give you the numbers on how many are registered. And you can see, I think it ranges from maybe three to 10. And then also how many complaints may be received. There are some cities that entered into the program as recently as a year ago, some maybe two or three years, and there haven't been that many complaints. But the complaints that do come in relate to chickens at large or chickens that don't stay in the backyard. Yeah, in addition, I think, as you know, as a city council, there's been a lot of, again, research and detail related to keeping of chickens and the temperature and, and the care of chickens. So I think that information's been before you. And leading up to this date, your comment has been that, that's something that the council wants to hold off on and possibly consider a city, a community-wide survey question where you get a statistically significant valid sampling of the residents on the issue. City Connect is a good way to get feedback on a certain topic at a certain time, but it doesn't provide you with a statistically significant sample. But this item is back tonight because you requested a little bit more research and detail and that's in the packet. And I commented at the previous meetings that staff can certainly draft a first reading of an ordinance allowing backyard chickens, but the desire is to have the consensus of a majority of the city council to do that, be it, you know, within an upcoming meeting or if the desire of the council is to deal with the survey question or ask the question in a survey, that's something that would not happen for anywhere from 12 to 14 months.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Getchel? Comments?
Well, only that he's looking, I'm assuming for direction.
Looking for direction. That's right. Councilmember Case.
Councilmember Aho.
Well, I, I think, you know, the research was really good and I appreciate all the input from our residents and from, from staff on this. And I think, I think my, my direction to staff would be that we look forward to doing a city, city survey to get a better, more statistical sample and then make a decision on what we want to do.
Okay. Councilmember Case.
I'm fine with that as a backup. I mean, I think that's not a bad second way to go, but I, I feel like primarily because we're one of the last cities in our whole region to approve chickens if we did go down this route, that other cities in essence have paved the way and showed us how it can be done correctly. So we certainly have a non-statistical look at, at lots and lots of people that were very positive. I, you know, read through some of the nays and again, some of it's not correct based on not incorrect information. I am absolutely, as I've said through, through or four different meetings, ready to move on this. But if, if, you know, if the pleasure of the councils, you just need that one more step, I'm, I'm certainly fine as a backup. But I would, I would say we have enough information, we have enough data, we have enough experience in others, cities, to actually design a really tight, appropriate, I guess restrictive in a positive way ordinance that could make this be done well. But it's my preference.
Okay. Councilmember Wixstrom.
Yes, I feel similarly as I've mentioned before. We didn't look for a statistical, what am I trying to say?
Support.
Support when we were looking at these. I, I feel so similarly to that, the B issue in a whole bunch of ways. So I really support this and I think we have received enough feedback to be confident that this is a good move. Although I do want to say, I think that there are restrictions that are reasonable and we know what those are, you know, no roosters and make sure that we clean up, there could be a fee, you know. We, those details I think we can hammer out together, but I really support this and, and really have. I think it's a really good move for the city and I think it will make a lot of our residents very happy.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
I've gotten input, both positive and negative. Some from City Connect, a lot of emails coming in, to the point where I guess I would like to see it be a question on the next city survey. Not so much, I'm sort of ambivalent about chickens, you know, it could be fine. The thing to question a little bit is I believe our rule now says no barnyard animals. And so how we change from there to allow chickens, but also then what kind of requirements do we want if someone wants to have, say, a goat for goat milk for their child who can't have milk? How do we do this so we can either expand this in a reasonable way or so we cannot expand this in a reasonable way is a question I would like answered. And it's something that really didn't come up with bees because they weren't necessarily considered the barnyard animals. And I think we accept horses out of that if I remember correctly. But I would want a little more information on how we go about changing this, just, you know, not as a specific chickens or goats or ducks or whatever it is, but is how we go about fairly applying our rule to all circumstances that may come up and what kind of background we want before we do the next step or the next step. This is chickens, does that apply to ducks and turkeys too? You know, even. I would like a little bit of information on this because I see this as a precedent and it may be one that we do want to go further with things that families would like to have. But the question for me is, is how can we do that in a fair way for all of our residents? And the survey, I think, could get us a little bit of time. At some point, I'd like that question answered of how do we move from this to what we may be doing in the future in, in a smooth way for the people's perception of the city as well as their needs? So, you know, obviously some dogs are pretty darn big if people have Great Danes and such. Some of them are very noisy. And we allow quite a number of pets, but they're mostly indoor animals. So that we're going into the range of outdoor animals and I want to do it in a nonspecific, reasonable way so that it is fair and it's not chickens versus ducks versus turkeys or versus goats.
Good points. I would definitely like to see this on a city survey. One of my big concerns is if we go ahead and do this and we don't do it right and we have complaints and so we have to reverse our decision, people have already made quite a bit of an investment, not only in a coop, and we've seen some of the coops are up to $1,200, $1,300, but also in animals that their kids might be attached to. So I think it's going to be one of those things that's hard to go back on. So I think we need to make sure we do it right. And I think having the, the blessing of, of a majority, as might be indicated in this community survey that we're going to be doing anyway, I think that'd be very helpful. But I think we need to have a lot of input into the way the question is worded, because you could ask somebody, are you in favor of having chickens in your backyard? And they have one vision in their mind of what that might look like with setbacks and screening or a solid fence that's all the way around so they wouldn't have to work, look at it. That might not be what the ordinance actually would propose. So I think it's important that we ask in that question, do you support chicken, backyard chickens if they're limited to such and such a number, no roosters? The property has to be at least a certain size, the chicken coop has to be this far from your neighbor's property, things like that, so that it's very clear what the stipulations are. Because otherwise, we're not going to get very helpful information out of that survey.
Yeah, my response, Mayor, would be knowing that through the work that we've done so far, that that is what you just mentioned is if we were to move ahead, it would be under those parameters that we would want to put that out there. I know that the researchers that we retained for the survey are very particular about how questions are worded and how they're put together because, you know, that's, that's a whole field in and of itself. We can't really word all the, we can't word the questions ourselves, but we could talk about putting out there that this is a type of program we're looking at and get a response. So we will, we'll work with them on that and, you know, talk about that as we get closer to doing that next survey in 2016.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Report of Public Works Director. Mr. Ellis.
Madam Mayor, City Council Members, this is a follow-up of our discussion at the October 20th City Council member, City Council Workshop, where we discussed local improvements being made in conjunction with the Southwest Light Rail Project. And so this resolution would signal the city's intent to actually fund those local improvements. And those local improvements would include the enhancement of West 70th Street, construction of plazas, the reconstruction of Technology Drive, installation of trail adjacent to the Southwest Station, upgrading fencing and railing, the construction of streetlights within town center, upgrades to the overhead catenary system poles, making bridge aesthetic improvements, and then finally the reconstruction of Eden Road. So the project office is looking for some intent in form of the resolution from all the cities that are looking at making local improvements before they move forward with final design. And quite honestly, construction is right around the corner. We're talking seven months from now, the project office would like to have this contract under, or this construction under contract with a bidder. So this is moving very quickly and the next step to ins- So this is moving very quickly. And the next step to ensure that these local improvements are made would be the adoption of this resolution. And then there's a companion resolution that I'll speak to next.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Ellis at this point? Councilmember Aho.
So, Mr. Ellis, are you asking, I see there's an amount of two million five hundred thousand, and that says for ensuring that Eden, Eden Road is reconstructed. Do we have any kind of figures in terms of maximum amounts of dollars that would be required for all of the upgrades, like the catenary poles and et cetera, et cetera?
We do. And with the exception of the Eden Road reconstruction, this would be included in the base project. So they're looking for a commitment to ensure that that's built with the base. All of the other improvements that I spoke to will be bid as bid alternates. So they will design them, they will be bid separately, they will be delivered to the council prior to award, and there'll be a final contemplation of whether or not we feel that's a wise investment. Eden Road will not be there, including that in the base. That will be the maximum amount that we'll be asked to pay for, because it will not be bid as an alternate. So they're looking for a commitment that, one, that will be in the base, so we need to know right now. The rest, we will be coming back to you with a recommendation to either move forward with the award, or actually reject them. And if I may just say one more thing, I've listed in the resolution an estimated cost for each of those improvements. They're estimates, they're probably going to change as we learn more and get a better design. But I think the goal is to try to cap this at the sum of what all of those add up to today. It's nine point eight seven five million. That's what we're really looking to maybe set the budget for all of these improvements, because some will go down and some will go up. But we're looking to limit it to that, that cap of nine point eight seven five million.
So the, the point is that, you know, I really wanted to highlight for our people in the audience and the people at home, is that when these projects are bid, and we actually get hard numbers, before anything is done, that's going to, those figures and all of the information is going to come back to the council, and the council is going to have the option to either accept or reject those, you know, by, by, by different aspects, not all as a whole thing. But we could say, we want the catenary poles, but we don't want, you know, this. So we could do it, you know, à la carte, so to speak.
Yes, that is correct. Again, with the exception of the Eden Road.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution of intent to fund local improvements within the Eden Prairie segment of the Southwest Light Rail Transit Project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item is a resolution of intent to transfer the City of Eden Prairie property for the proposed Southwest Light Rail Transit Project.
Again, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers, this would contemplate that the city would dedicate to the project office, Met Council, whoever is ultimately in charge with the construction of the project, the land for the City West Station, and also a segment of West Sixty-second that will provide access to the City West Station. So this is property that the city acquired through the development of the property, was set aside specifically for the purpose of the future City West Station. So that was our intent. When we acquired it, we're just signaling our intent to dedicate it to the project. This is something that the FTA would like to see, so that they know that, one, this, their, the project isn't being asked to pay for the land, and then inflating the cost, and also just an assurance that the plans can move forward as contemplated, and that would take the dedication of this property.
Okay. Want to ask a question?
Just asking Rickson.
Any questions for Mr. Ellis? Okay, hearing none? Is there a motion?
Move to adopt a resolution of intent to fund local improvements within the Eden Prairie segment of the Southwest Light Rail Transit Project.
That's the right-
Oh, sorry, that's the previous one. Adapt resolution of intent to transfer City of Eden Prairie property for the proposed Southwest Light Rail Transit Project.
Second.
That's the right one.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any other business for the council? Hearing none? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.